May the Fourth be with everyone. It is May 4, 2021 for our regular council meeting. Calling to order here. Notice that the city council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice regarding any of the agendized items. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor DC.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett. Councilmember Aslan.
Do or do not, there is no try.
Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm here.
Councilmember Salas.
I'm here, may the Fourth be with you all.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Thank you. Well, who do we have here? How about Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Would be my honor. Thank you. Please stand if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Shimoney, would you give our mission statement, please?
Yes, my, it'd be my pleasure. The mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Excellent. And I did want to provide notification to the public as we have several public participants that the discussion regarding the aura development is going to be delayed in the next few weeks that there will be a motion towards during that agendized item, just so everyone is aware that there will not be as thorough of a discussion as expected on that agendized item. Ms. Saltzberg, do we have any public participation for today?
Yes, Mayor, we have two public participants. The first is going to be John Saltinstall. John, if you are ready to go, we'll go ahead and get your time started.
Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you, John. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Good evening, afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm John Saltinstall, the Business Retention and Expansion Manager for the City of Flagstaff. I'm going to talk about a couple of events briefly. Economic Development Week and National Police Week are celebrated together from May 9 through May 15. Economic development after all is ultimately the translation of the vision and dream, drive and force, aptitudes and passions of individuals in a way that provides and serves for their community and for themselves. Economic Development Week is a celebration of those individuals who have invested their time and energy to leverage any and all resources in order to go into business for themselves, serving others while living a life fulfilled. Even the largest businesses started with one person and an idea. In Flagstaff, we thank the people who run businesses, large and small, for choosing Flagstaff as their home for their businesses. Two such people have recently applied for the Adaptive Reuse Program and both will be awarded up to $5,000 to assist with related city Flagstaff development fees. The Business Retention and Expansion Incentive will be rolled out for a second round on July 1, inviting entrepreneurs and their businesses to stay and grow in Flagstaff. National Police Week was established in 1962 by John F. Kennedy, proclaiming May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that day falls as National Police Week. Coinciding with Economic Development Week, National Police Week is a reminder of the tremendous support that law enforcement provides to the communities in which they serve and the confidence they inspire that allows people to trust in the rule of law. A codified trust in the social contracts that allow people to, since time immemorial, that allow people to feel comfortable enough to leave their homes and to bring their ideas to the world, knowing that their investments of self and time are safe and secure. Law enforcement professionals serve and protect our communities, making life as we know it possible. In the past years, we've read proclamations and had events throughout the community, including at the Law Enforcement Administrative Facility. This year, things are different. Following the direction of interested nationwide law enforcement, National Police Week events in Washington DC will be postponed until October. In the meanwhile, for Economic Development Week and for National Police Week, let us reflect upon the blessings of our vibrant, diverse community. Shop locally and thank your law enforcement professionals. And I thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Saltinstall. Next public participant.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Heidi Hansen.
Heidi, you can go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. I'm filling in for Trace Ward, our CBB Director. We just wanted to let you know that we have begun National Tourism, Tourism, or excuse me, National Travel and Eco-Tourism Week. And we are excited to tell you that we will be ending the week, or probably the week ends on Sunday, with Friday being in the middle of Heritage Square for our I Heart Flag Acts of Kindness Day. So we hope that you will come out, enjoy a free flower, a visitor guide, an I Heart Flag sticker, and just remember the good things that make travel and tourism in Flagstaff so important and so vibrant for our economy. We're also asking on this week that you try to pay it forward, a little bit like John Saltinstall just shared, by making sure that you give a compliment to someone, that you shop local, maybe you buy a coffee, a tea for somebody, and of course, we always want you to volunteer and mentor others. So please get out there and help us celebrate these monumental weeks that are nationally recognized. So thank you, Stacy, for the moment, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen. That brings us down to our agenda item number five, which is our Proclamations and Recognitions. We have three of them this evening, starting with Building Safety Month. The City of Flagstaff, Arizona, is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serves our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of disaster. Our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians. Building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. These guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built, in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. Prevent, prepare, protect, building code save. The theme for Building Safety Month 2021 encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, water safety, training the next generation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Paul J. Deezee, as Mayor of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month. And accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Mr. Folk, can you have a word on this?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Dan Folk, Community Development Director for the City of Flagstaff. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for the proclamation declaring May as Building Safety Month. Certainly, 2020 is a year we'll never forget, and safety took on a whole new meaning. I want to take a minute to recognize what the Building Safety and Code Compliance Program were able to achieve during the pandemic. When you look at the numbers, 2020 was busier than 2019 for us. Evaluation of projects was up, more permits were issued, and more inspections were completed. When City Hall closed in March of 2020, a number of programs needed to quickly identify how they would continue to provide services while keeping our employees and the public safe. The Building Safety and Code Compliance Program quickly instituted the use of personal protection equipment and best practices to include social distancing and clearing inspection areas of workers. Communications were really critical during this time, communication both internally within our team and with the contractors in the community we serve. So the team was able to provide, continue to provide a high level of service and protect the health of our team. So I'd like to commend and thank our building official, Amy Palmer, Building Inspection Manager, Rick Stinosis, Plan Reviewer, Victoria St. Clair, and Code Compliance Manager, Reggie Eccleston, for leading their teams during this past year. We had no significant staffing concerns while continuing to provide in-person services. I believe this is a reflection of the team's commitment to each other and the community. So thank you again for recognizing Building Safety Month and the important work on behalf of the continued health and safety of Flagstaff. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Folk. And yes, thank you to all of our city staff who've been keeping us safe through all of this time. That does bring us down to our agenda item 5B, which is a proclamation regarding Bike Month. Bicycling represents one of the most environmentally responsible, clean, efficient, economic, and healthy forms of transportation. The City of Flagstaff and Flagstaff Biking Organization recognize the importance of a bicycle-friendly community. Bike Month raises public awareness about the need to improve bicycle infrastructure in the community to encourage more people to commute and exercise by bicycle. And bicycling improves air quality, reduces fossil fuel use and greenhouse gas emissions, promotes sustainability, and helps manage traffic congestion. And the education of both motorists and cyclists on matters of safety and sharing the road is fundamental to reducing crashes and injuries, as well as improving the relationship between motorists and cyclists. Bicycling is an excellent, low-impact aerobic activity that improves health, reduces stress, and combats diseases related to an activity. And riding a bicycle helps both children and adults connect to their community and feel a sense of place. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul J. Deezee, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as the City of Flagstaff's Bike Month. This one's for you, Shimoney, right here. And thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, representing there with the pick. And I do believe we have a comment from Jolie Montoya as well. We'd like to turn over the mic here.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Jolie Montoya, and I am a board member for Flagstaff Biking Organization, otherwise known as FBO. So as an all-volunteer organization, we appreciate the support from the mayor and city council to recognize May as Bike Month. After having to cancel our normal Bike to Work Week last year, we are ecstatic to be able to host this virtual one to encourage all forms of biking this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Montoya. All right, that brings us down to Agenda Item 5C. This is our proclamation for National Nurses Appreciation Week. National Nurses Week honors nurses' contributions and sacrifices and reminds us to thank the medical professionals who keep us healthy and safe. And to acknowledge the contributions of nurses and call attention to their working conditions, the International Council of Nurses, established May 12 as International Nurses Day in 1974. Nurses serve as trusted healthcare providers for patients in our state. Nurses are working tirelessly to treat patients with COVID-19 and combat community spread nationwide, while grieving colleagues who have lost their lives during the pandemic. Nurses work to expand access to care in underserved communities and help disparities and combat systemic racism in healthcare. Nurses provide high-quality primary, acute, and specialty care services while focusing on health promotion, disease prevention, health education and counseling, guiding patients to make smarter health and lifestyle choices every day. There are more than 5 million nurses in the United States and over 70,000 in the state of Arizona. And be it resolved, therefore, that I, Paul J. Deezee, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, hereby declare May 6 through the 12, 2021, as National Nurses Week. And with that, I would like to draw attention that I was excited to be a part of hoping to nominate nurses in our community. These are nominations that came from our community, individuals who were touched by nurses over the last year, who really deserve special recognition, particularly in light of the many, many difficulties faced, particularly in that particular profession. You know, May 6 does mark the beginning of the annual week where people across the nation honor the everyday heroes that work tirelessly to help people, save people's lives, our nurses. While the vital work nurses do should be recognized every day of the year, Nurse Appreciation Week this year feels more important than ever. Which is why I felt compelled to have our community nominate these nurses who have had an impact on their lives. And a beautiful part of this that I found was that several of these individuals didn't even know that they had such an impact on an individual's life, holding somebody's hand just as they went into this, went into surgery, how much that they, as an educator, affected a student's life as a nurse. And I think that is one of the most beautiful things about the profession. So with that, I give you our National Nurses Appreciation Week, where we are recognizing the nurses nominated by the public and really highlighting why they were chosen by the community for additional recognition. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through these and really quote the individuals who nominate them, so that way we all get, they all get the special recognition they deserve. Claire Rogan is ICU nurse at Flagstaff Medical Center, and said that Claire loves what she does, and she puts her whole effort into being the best nurse she can be for her patients. Nick Gualt, also at FMC in the PACU. Nick takes a little piece of them home in his heart and on his mind, and being a nurse is who he is every day, all day. And I'm gonna just apologize to start off with if I mispronounce anybody's name, so bear with me. Cody Dunlap, Coconino High School Nurse. Cody constantly stays up on all CDC guidelines and provides information to parents and staff to keep people safe and educate those who might not have the ability to get the information themselves. Stacy Payne, Critical Care Nurse and Nurse Educator at FMC. Stacy bravely and tirelessly collaborated with physicians and hospital administration to create policies and procedures that enable nurses to safely provide the best care possible. Summer Johnson, Flight Nurse for Guardian Air. Summer is so compassionate with families who lost their lives in this pandemic. She is a true hero and deserves to be recognized for her efforts. Derek Fusselman, Medical Intensive Care Unit at FMC. Derek definitely made a difference in so many patients' lives while placing his own, own self at risk each day at work. Derek Fusselman has and will continue to make a difference in the lives of those patients who aren't committed to his care. Chantel Salsa, Nurse Educator for Surgical Services at FMC. Chantel keeps track of nurses and texts in the operating room, Training Program for All Surgical Services. She has such a sense of peace that staff often come to her to vent or get advice. Heidi Young Blacko, at FMC in the NICU, and that's the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit, Flight RN for Classic Air Medical, Midwifery, Midwifery Clinicals in Tuba City. Heidi holds several certifications and works in several roles currently as a nurse, including flight at various departments at Flagstaff Medical Center and assisting with COVID-19 vaccination efforts. Joseph McLaughlin, ICU Surgical Trauma ICU Nurse at FMC and Flight Nurse for Guardian. Joe was on the front line during the COVID pandemic. He picked up extra shifts every week and put his patient's care as his top priority every moment of the day, and through the most challenging shifts. Jessica Probert, Cardiology at FMC. Jessica listens with the utmost patience to all my concerns. She can tell by the way she interacted with other colleagues and staff that she is a true professional. Jamie Reisner, Pediatric and Pediatric Intensive Care Unit at FMC. Jamie agreed to serve as the Peds PICU interim manager, which that decision alone took courage and confidence. Jamie helped implement new procedures to keep patients and staff safe during the pandemic. Amy Leopard. Throughout this last year, Amy has pushed fear aside during the COVID pandemic, knowing her calling to be a nurse was stronger than her fear. Amy is a single mother of three. Tamara Warren. Tamara has saved so many lives, watched as some lost theirs, prayed for all. She is selfless, dedicated, kind-hearted, and overall a beautiful soul. Rebecca Verlock, Registered Nurse on Unit 3 at FMC. Becca started as a new nurse at FMC in October, and when she isn't working 14-hour shifts at the hospital, she has been working at the vaccine clinic administering shots to community members. Jaclyn Kreitz, Administrator at Flagstaff Bone and Joint Surgical Center. Jackie moved from Phoenix last year in the middle of the pandemic to help the healthcare community in Flagstaff, to build the team at the Surgery Center at Flagstaff Bone and Joint. Yolanda Baltimore, FMC. Yolanda's door is always open. She often stays late. She does all of this while taking care of her own family. She's an amazing nurse and manager. Benjamin Scott, Surgery Nurse at FMC. Been as a nurse in the surgery area at FMC when elective surgeries got canceled due to COVID. His previous experience in the emergency department allowed him to suddenly shift over. Tara Swanson, CCICU at FMC. In early 2021, Tara lost her dad to COVID. She stayed strong for her family, and we would like her to be recognized for her resistance and strength. Amethyst Deezy. Amethyst's infectious positivity has undoubtedly made every patient of hers feel at ease and comfortable, despite the terrible frightening circumstances that were this year. Tara Crane, Pediatric Care ICU Nurse. During the pandemic, Tara was moved to adult ICU to assist in the care of many COVID-19 patients. After the rush of patients subsided, she went on to assist with giving vaccines at Elk's Lodge up until recently and has just finished her training to assist the state with vaccine distributions. Bridgette Fusselman, Director of Compliance at the Rehabilitation Hospital in Northern Arizona. Due to Bridgette's nursing skills and leadership capabilities, she was quickly asked to serve in a leadership position. Not only did she help those patients under professional care as a nurse, but she also bettered the lives of the team members she served, with and supervised by her positive example and hard work ethic. Nick Hollis, RN in the OR Unit at FMC. Nick risked his life along with many others this past year during a time that has tested the strength of many COVID. Nick is a healer and is a humble one at that. Donna Price, the NAU School of Nursing. Donna's been teaching nursing at NAU since fall 2001. She was a certified nurse midwife before she began her 20-year teaching career. Donna has taught numerous nursing cohorts about birthing babies. More recently, Donna was instrumental in creating a palliative care gerontology clinical course so that students could gain experience caring for elderly and those with life-limiting illnesses. Nancy Hagerman, at the Coconino Community College School of Nursing. Nancy is compassionate about helping others and has displayed exceptional resilience during COVID. She adapted quickly and ensured students were able to safely attend skills lab to learn the essential skills of a registered nurse and provide the community with a viable nursing workforce. Nancy has touched so many lives in a positive way, and I am grateful to call her my colleague. Jaclyn Gent, FMC. My experience at the hospital was made so much better because Jaclyn was my nurse, and I appreciated having her with me through such a difficult ordeal. Mackenzie Bevart, Chief Health Administrator, Nurse Supervisor at FU SD. A healthcare professional for more than 15 years, Mackenzie Bevart has been a leader in the Flagstaff Unified School District since 2010, when she first came on board as a school nurse. During the current health crisis, Bevart has served as the Chief Health Administrator to coordinate the school district's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Shannon Baggett, ICU OR Nurse at FMC. Shannon was a charge nurse in the OR before COVID hit, but went to the ICU frontline. She not only cared for her patients doing everything she could, she cared for her coworkers as well, strongly advocating for mental health services and crisis counselors for the nurses and others facing the worst of the pandemic. Claire Johnson, Home Healthcare Nurse. Claire is the only home healthcare nurse specializing in COVID patient care. She has committed for her brave dedication to taking care of those who are not admitted to the hospital, but nevertheless needed consistent and reliable care. Oh, I'm getting notification that is the last slide, which helpful because I could use a glass of water, but I just want to thank all of the nurses out there, not just those who've gotten the recognition today, but how much we owe as a community to you. And I want to let notice too that downtown businesses this week, May 6 through the 12, will be giving discounts to the, to nurses, retail restaurants, and there'll be additional notification on social media about what those discounts will entail. We're also arranging for free massages for nurses at Heritage Square on Saturday. And looking forward to a big event to really, not just through a PowerPoint slide, but really show the recognition and appreciation we as a community have for our nurses, whether they were on the COVID ICU, whether they were educating our next generation of nurses to take care of those for generations to come, whether it's home healthcare, whether it was, whatever it may be, this is Nurses Week all around. And I want to sincerely thank all of you for your dedication to our community and your selfless caring for your patients and caring for your coworkers. So, thank you so much. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number 6, which is our appointments. And 6A is our consideration of appointments for Parks and Recreation Commission. And I do believe the balls in your court, Councilmember Aslan, on this front.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for a very heartfelt celebration there. I would be very pleased to recommend Ezekiel Ogden for this role. First of all, I was really impressed with how many young applicants we had for the Parks and Recreation Commission. It's great to see so many newer, young voices out there looking to join our commissions. Ezekiel Ogden is a graduate of NEU in the Parks and Rec Department, and he's looking to boost his resume a little bit while giving back to the community that gave him his degree. And I would be very pleased to give him the opportunity to do that.
I will second that, Jim McCarthy.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Right, and I have, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if I need to specify the timeframe, or since it's only one appointment, it's probably given.
Well, so just to clarify.
2022.
Excellent. Well, I have a motion by Councilmember Aslan, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy, for the appointment to a term expiring August 2022. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you.
All right. We are down to Agenda Item 7A. This is our liquor license public hearing. This is the, 7A is the Consideration in Action on Liquor License Application for Matthew Allen Gorman, Matty G's, 6 East Aspen Avenue, number 100, Series 12, which is a new application. Staff recommended action is to open the public hearing, receive citizen input, and close the public hearing. Staff recommended action is to open the public hearing, receive citizen input and close the public hearing. One moment here, I am on my personal computer because my other one is currently under review by IT to figure out what the heck is going on. So Sterling, you may need to help me with the public hearing. Step by step here, but I'll start off with opening the public hearing and see if we have commentary from city staff.
Good evening, Council Mayor Ryan Charlie with the Police Department. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the application in front of you. I found no derogatory records for the applicants nor the business, and I believe the applicants are here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the applicants aren't required to speak, but if they would like some airtime, I would definitely like to open up the table for that opportunity.
Hi, this is Matt with Matty G's. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Right, yeah, I just want to say thank you for consideration here for the liquor license. We are super excited to be in Flagstaff. My wife and kids love, love the city as a whole and we're very fortunate, we feel, to be open in Flagstaff. For a family restaurant that serves steak burgers as our niche, but we also have lobster rolls and all American food like foot long hot dogs and yes, deep fried Oreos. So just hope that everybody gets a chance to come on by. I'm often there on Mondays and Tuesdays cooking for you. So if you can come on by, please say hello and any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman, and thank you informing me of the deep fried Oreos. That got my attention, so. Thank you. And I'm seeing from the city clerk that we do not have any public comment. At this time for this, so I, Councilmember Salas, would you like to make a motion? Oh, well, first let me close the public hearing and then Councilmember Salas.
Perfect. You already did it, Mayor. Thank you.
Cool. I remember it. I didn't need my cheat sheet on my computer this time, so I'm getting there.
Well, thank you, Mayor. With my enthusiasm to try the lobster rolls. I make a motion to forward the application to the state with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. I will second that motion. I have a first by Councilmember Salas, seconded by my own, by myself. And any further discussion, Council? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We're down to agenda item number eight, our consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as written?
So moved Jim McCarthy.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. I have a motion by yourself, seconded by me. I will second that motion. Any further discussion, Council? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries moving right along here. This is great. And down to agenda item number nine A, this is our routine items. This is the consideration and approval of grant agreement. Grant agreement between the City of Flagstaff and the US Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration for Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program Funding. For operational and maintenance expenses directly related to the Flagstaff Polyam Airport. Staff recommended action is to approve the grant agreement in the amount of $1,444,012 for airport operational and maintenance costs. Ms. BK, take us.
Welcome. Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. Stacy Breckland eggs on the grants and contracts manager. And this is for consideration and approval of a grant agreement between the City of Flagstaff and the US Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration. It's for the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program. And as you mentioned, this grant agreement is a little over 1.4 million. This grant is 100% grant funded. There's no matching dollars, so that's exciting to receive 100% federal share. The FA grant provides funds for costs related to operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial supplies. Combating the spread of pathogens at the airport and debt service payments. And with that, myself can answer any questions and I know Barney Helmuth, our Airport Director is also on the line to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Do we have any comments and questions? I'm not seeing anything. We have a 10 second rule in education that if you wait 10 seconds, that's normally the cutoff when people are actually feel comfortable to speak, so. I count that in my head sometimes. Well, with that, Council, if we don't have comments, questions, I would be happy to entertain a motion from Council. While I figure out what the heck's going on with my other computer. Two out of three are down right now. Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the grant agreement in demand stated for airport operational and maintenance class.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Salas. Do I have a second?
I will second.
All right, I have a second by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? That motion carries down to agenda item number 10A of our regular agenda. This is the consideration and approval of preliminary plat case number. PZ dash 20 dash 00088 dash 01 CDR 276 LLC requests preliminary plat approval for Canyon Del Rio Block. One located at 3200 East Butler Avenue, single family home subdivision on 13.34 acres in the R1 single family residential zone. Staff recommended action is staff recommends the city council in accordance with the findings presented in this report and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval. For one vote, approve the preliminary plat. Ms. Antle.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to present to you the preliminary plat for Canyon Del Rio Block I. I have a quick presentation if that's all right with you.
Yes, ma'am. Go right in.
Great. Hopefully this is loading. Maybe. All right, can you see the presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we'll go through this pretty quickly. This is the, one of the first blocks we are seeing as part of the Canyon Del Rio development. This is a preliminary plat. For a single family subdivision with 60 or I'm sorry, with 50 single family home lots on 13.34 acres. In the R1 single family residential zone. Staff approved the preliminary plat, the IDS team back on March 19th, 2021. So here you'll just see the vicinity map. This is showing the larger Canyon Del Rio area. All of the blocks and lots have not yet been created. We still have to go through and submit the final Canyon Del Rio block plat to you. That should be coming here shortly. Sort of tracking along behind these block flats, but tonight you'll see this area in yellow. That does go all the way up to Butler is the parcel or the plot, the block we are talking about today. Just as a reminder, Canyon Del Rio is a 261 acre development located at Fourth Street and Butler Avenue. It will consist of 1,426 residential dwelling units at about 225,000. Square feet of commercial development. The rezoning request and development agreement and preliminary block plat for this development was approved last year in June. And just as a reminder, this rezoning request did it and development agreement included provisions for affordable housing. The Canyon Del Rio development is, is basically doing an in lieu contribution of $650 for the first 1,000 residents. Our residential units in the development. So this block, as said, was is 13.34 acres in the larger 261 acre Canyon Del Rio, 50 lots, R1 zoning. It is also in the resource protection overlay. Here is that block plat for you. You can see the layout of all of these lots. The property has both forest resources and tree resources we need to deal with. There are three specific findings that we look at when dealing with subdivision flats. The first one is compliance with the zoning code. So first is compliance with that R1 zone standards, the density they have complied with, and they also comply with the requirements of the development agreement. Lot design and resource protections will require using specific building envelopes when developing these individual lots. The lots all meet the minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. We are looking at alternative setbacks in order to ensure adequate slope preservation. And of course, the zoning code does allow city council to approve alternative lot sizes and setbacks on final flats. The property also will meet the resource protection standards. There's a little bit of magic going on here because Canyon Del Rio does basically have a larger resource bank attributed to it. So resources are balanced across the entire site. So you can see here what's required and then what's proposed. They will be taking out of their resource bank in order to meet their, their forest resource protection standards. You can see though, that they do meet all of their requirements for slope preservation within the subdivision. This is the resource protection plan. You can see the areas of steep slopes as well as the gray is basically that concentration. Or spread of, of the tree canopy throughout the site. And the plat was found to be in compliance with historic and cultural resources. There is a total of 55.8 acres within the Canyon Del Rio development that will be used as open space. And this plat specifically provides an additional 1.43 acres of civic space. The second required finding is the engineering standards, which includes our public systems analysis as well as access and traffic sewer and water. The IDS team has determined it, this particular subdivision request to be in compliance with those standards. Here's our engineering standards for water and wastewater and stormwater. And lastly, that this subdivision meets subdivision and land split regulations. These are preliminary plat procedures and application requirements. And the minimum required subdivision requirements. Subdivision standards have include lot design, street design, easement design and block design. Again, the IDS team. Has determined that this plat is in conformance with these requirements. The city council is required to find that the preliminary plat meets the requirements of the city code, the zoning code. Title 11, the general plans and subdivisions code and title 13, engineering design standards and specifications. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this item and based on the required finding. Forwards this preliminary plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval. And if you should have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Antle. Council, do we have any questions, comments? Oceans. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item 10A on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. I'm onto agenda item 10B. This is the consideration approval of preliminary plat case number. PZ dash 20 dash 00089 dash 01 CDR 276 LLC requests preliminary plat approval for Canyon Del Rio Block G. Located at 3200 East Butler Avenue, a single family town home subdivision on 9.03 acres in the MR. Medium density residential zone. Staff recommended action is that staff recommends the city council in accordance with the findings presented in this report. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval for one approve the preliminary plat. Ms. Antle.
Thank you. Very similar presentation here for you. This is another track within Canyon Del Rio, so second track to go through this process. Again, I won't rehash for you, but too many details about Canyon Del Rio, but this block G is for 50 town home lots. It is a total of 9.03 acres and it's in the medium density residential zone. This plat was approved by the inner division staff team on March 19th, 2021. So here's that vicinity map. You can see we're just over, just across the road from where we saw the previous plat, which is tracked I. Within the larger Canyon Del Rio development, the same. The same story continues on for Canyon Del Rio, the larger development, and again, that the rezoning was approved last year. So block G is 9.03 acres. It is in the MR zone. It's 50 single family town home lots. Is also in the resource protection overlay. So here is the block G preliminary plat. This is the layout of lots. The majority of these units are attached. There are maybe but one or two detached units within the project. This project meets the density of the MR range as well as the Canyon Del Rio Development Agreement. The lot design are, meet the resource protection requirements, but they're also using what we call the planned residential development option. All of the lot sizes meet minimum size for either town home or single family cottage building types. So again, when we use the PRD, we use the transect building types when looking at minimum lot sizes. And we don't necessarily look at just the MR standards. The setbacks we utilize are transect as well, so we use the T4 into standards. When using that planned residential development option. And of course, again, zoning code allows city council to approve alternative lot sizes and setbacks. On final plats. So this is, this is that planned residential development option. You can see there's the one single. Standalone building and then you'll see the duplex town home buildings. These are similar to the town homes that you would see in sort of the pinnacle pines development in Flagstaff. Again, there are three findings. The first finding is compliance with the zoning code. So I've gone over how the, the PRD standards have been met. The resource protection standards are also met, but again, we are dipping into the resource bank for forest resources. And in this case, a little bit into the slope bank for slope resources. And again, these will be made up on and other locations within the larger Canyon Del Rio development. Here is what the resource protection plan looks like. You can see those areas of steep slope as well as the forest canopy. Again, in compliance with their historic and cultural resources and you'll see that this plat is providing an additional 3.29 acres of civic and open space. Finding two is compliance with the engineering standards. Again, this plat was found to be in compliance with the, all of the engineering standards as previously discussed on the last plat. As well as the subdivision standards found in title 11. And so the required findings are compliance with title 10, title 11 and title 13. The Planning and Zoning Commission, based on the required findings, forwards this preliminary plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval. If you should have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I would note that the applicant is here as well.
So thank you, Ms. Antle. Council, do we have any questions, comments, motions? Councilmember Aslan.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, I just want to confirm really quickly that nothing we're talking about this afternoon interferes with the Arizona Trail transect.
Good evening. No, that these two subdivisions do not interfere with the Arizona Trail.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. I just wanted to double check.
Good question, Councilmember. Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With staff recommendation and as recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission, I move to approve. I move to approve the request to, I move to approve the preliminary plat for Canyon Del Rio Block G located at 3200 East Butler Avenue, a single-family townhome subdivision on 9.03 acres in the MR medium-density residential zone.
Excellent. I have a motion from Councilmember Solis. Do I have a second?
Second. Okay.
I think, I think Councilmember McCarthy beat you to it.
I think Sweet beat me, so it's all right.
Well, we'll defer to, Councilmember Sweet has the second on that motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Onto agenda item 10C. This is the consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2021-12. An ordinance of the city council, the city Flagstaff abandoning and authorizing the sale of approximately 1,400 square feet of the Hoskins Avenue Public Rightofway adjacent to 709 South O'Leary Street, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability and establishing an effective date. Staff recommended action is that staff recommends a motion that the requested public rightofway within Hoskins Avenue is necessary to complete public improvements and therefore they do not approve the abandonment requests. Or if council finds that the full width of Hoskins Avenue is no longer needed as public rightofway, then at the May 4, 2021 council meeting, we will read ordinance number 2021-12 by title only for the first time. City staff.
Hi, good afternoon. Bryce Doughty, I'm your real estate manager. I'm here with Martin Entz, multimodal transportation planner, to present the staff findings on an abandonment of public rightofway request on Hoskins Avenue. The applicant, Tommy Hernandez, is in attendance as well and has prepared remarks he would like to give. It's safe to say Tommy has been working with the city on this abandonment request to bring it before council for a long time. All right, Hoskins Avenue, as we reminded from last week, is in the south side. Here's a satellite view, the two north-south streets. The west one is Fontaine Street and the east one is O'Leary Street. This abandonment request right here is to abandon approximately 1,400 square feet on the south side of, or on the north side of Hoskins Street, adjacent to 709 South O'Leary. And that's highlighted further here on the slide. The owner has had the survey drilled of the drawing prepared of the unimproved rightofway, which identifies in the light blue turquoise approximately 1,400 square feet beyond the sidewalk improvements, which is this darker blue. And that's the subject property that we're, we're going to discuss today. Martin will kind of let you know about requirements for curb offsets that we do like to retain. And I believe that's two feet beyond sidewalk. So we will, if council determines that this rightofway is no longer needed, we will request retain two feet beyond the sidewalk in any future legal description. And this is just the, the, the history of this is the, the dedicated lands came in 1943. And I've showing you this, we're, we're at track lot nine here. And I just, I mentioned that to highlight, this is the GIS of a rightofway in the cities, in the city system. And as you can see, the, the improved portions of Hoskins Avenue do not use the full width of the rightofway. And so we've got existing improvements and we've got excess or rightofway that the city is not currently using to its full potential. And that's kind of set in the stage. And part of the findings for the city is determine if there are future public uses for the rightofway. And I'm going to turn this over to Martin Entz to once again explain the proposed future improvements to utilize that full width of Hoskins Avenue and to how abandoning this portion related to this request will impact those plans.
Thank, thank you, Bryce. So we reviewed this at a previous council meeting, so I'll go through it relatively quickly. But this is an excerpt from the existing regional plan that shows two planned foots connections on either side of Hoskins that connect through the south side neighborhood from NAU campus over to Lone Tree. Next slide. As well as this adds cycle track and sidewalk to the middle portion of Hoskins Avenue to connect those two ends of the foots trail and make a continuous east-west facility for pedestrians and bicyclists between Lone Tree and the campus through that south side neighborhood. Next slide. And here's the existing conditions on Hoskins Avenue. The street is 42 feet from back of curb to back of curb, and that includes travel lanes as well as parking on both sides. Although in neither cases, the, is the street striped, but those are the allowable uses. There are also five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the street without parkways. And you can see on the right-hand side or, or on north side of the street is the excess rightofway in the current condition. And go to the next slide. And this slide illustrates potential future uses for that rightofway, which include the addition of the cycle track on the south or left-hand side of the image, parking maintained on both sides of the street, and three-foot parkway, five-foot sidewalk and two-foot bench that Bryce mentioned earlier off the curb on the north side of the street. And this would, this would, all of those uses combined would take up most of the existing rightofway. There might be a few feet left over after that. Next slide. And this shows kind of that, that same configuration, buddy, in plan view, the yellow being the cycle track sidewalk, blue being on-street parking, purple is the travel lanes, green is the parkway, and the gray is the sidewalk on the north side of the street. And next slide. And I think back to Bryce with the previous slide.
Thanks, Martin. I appreciate it. The remaining slides are really just to, to give you a visual of what we're looking at with the conditions on the ground. And so that's looking, looking west. And there's really the strip that we're talking about adjacent to 709. That's looking east, north, and then just from the southwest. And that's really, we're talking about that edge of sidewalk improve or unimproved rightofway. And just to summarize what Martin said, if the strip of public rightofway is abandoned, the city limits its ability to provide both a cycle track connecting the foots trails as well as off-street parking. And because of that trade-off, city staff recommends retaining the existing public rightofway related to this request. However, should council decide to abandon, we have estimated the value of the property along the same lines as we, we have previous abandonment requests and recommend setting the minimum bid at $14.75 a square foot, which equates to approximately $20,000 for the property. Once the square footage is finalized, a mayor, a minimum price will be set and the applicant, as the abutting property owner, will have the right of first refusal to meet that minimum bid. And then the property will return to the tax rolls. And that's what we have for you tonight. Thank you for your time and we're available for any questions or clarifications.
Thank you. Council, questions? Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. In one of the photographs, I see that there are some utilities, the ones on screen right now, there's the utility pole on the south side of the street. So when we do that street expansion in the bikeway, is that going to be an issue? Will that have to be moved?
Your, your honor, Councilmember McCarthy, it, it is possible, yes. I, I can't, I don't know the individual circumstances and I can't tell from the photograph if there is an ADA minimum width on the sidewalk between the, between the curb and the pole. And a very, very, very bare minimum to meet that, to meet the letter law, that would have to be, I believe, 30, 30 inches. Ideally, we would, we would address that situation, but it kind of depends on how much other construction is going on. If, if we had a project that rebuilt the street, for example, and that did, that pole did not meet ADA requirements. And I think by, per ADA, we would be obligated to, to fix the sidewalk or move the poles or do something to create an accessible way on that sidewalk.
All right. Thank you, Martin.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions as well. So, I mean, what, if this was going to be developed by the city for this purpose, I mean, what's the timeline? Is this even in the pipeline for creating those lanes, et cetera?
Your honor, I can, I can answer a portion of that question. If you go back to the slide that showed the, the two foots trails and and the cycle track, that one. So the, so the foots connection in orange to the, to the left side of the screen or to the west that connects onto campus is a funded project right now. So we have had a couple of conversations with NAU. It has been kind of going, moving slowly, but we do have funding for it. So if we're able to work out something with NAU, that project could conceptually be, be built with the funding that we have now. And of course, because of where it's located, it could essentially stand alone and just provide access from that end of Hoskins onto the campus and function all on its own. On the right side of the screen, that the orange foots trail could potentially be part of the Lone Tree Overpass and Corridor project. We would, we would certainly make a, make a pitch that it be included as part of that. If, if it, if that were determined to be beyond the scope of Lone Tree, then we would probably follow up shortly afterwards with a separate foots project to complete that connection over to O'Leary. And that really leaves the cycle track and sidewalk connection in between. And when that gets implemented would depend in part on how extensive the reconstruction would have to be. For example, if, if we were just taking a part of the existing street and providing some paint and railing, it would be a relatively inexpensive, easy-to-deliver project. And if we, if we were rebuilding the north curb line as part of it, then it would, it would be somewhat more substantial and we'd have to plan a little bit more carefully for the funding in the, in the five-year plan to accomplish that. If the, if the property develops, some off-site obligations may fall to the property owner, but I, I believe that would be somewhat limited and may, may only include items like moving the sidewalk to provide a parkway and probably not moving the, the curb all the way to provide extra parking along the street.
Okay, thank you. Well, Councilmember McCarthy, you have a question? And then I did want to hear from the applicant as well, so.
Well, yes, we definitely want to hear from the applicant. I just had a quick question. Between Mountain View Drive, which is over there by the Mountain View Dorm, and Hoskins, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we own that rightofway too, which would be the left side of the, the, what's on the screen, what was on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. McCarthy, the, you're correct. The rightofway does extend all the way to the, until it deadens into a retaining wall for Mountain View Drive. And so that is a paved parking surface that does service the adjacent house.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You, Councilmember McCarthy. I'd like to turn it over to the applicant to let the individual speak before we continue.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Tommy Hernandez. Along with my uncle Wolford Chavez, we are the owners of 709 South O'Leary. I'm actually a fourth-generation Flagstaff resident and this property has been in our family since my grandparents purchased it in 1948. I'm very excited to finally have the opportunity to speak with you, the city council, about our plans to develop on our property. We have taken our preliminary site plans to construct an apartment complex before Planning and Zoning Commission. The plan includes six to eight total apartments that will be one and two bedrooms each. If you approve our request to abandon the easement to the south of our property, we would love to include this land in our project. Our plans are to leave the easement as open space, landscape it and add a sign to recognize the historical significance of the south side. Due to gentrification, we all know this neighborhood will never be the same, but allowing us to recognize its rich, rich history is priceless. Granting our request would not place any undue burden or financial cost to the city of Flagstaff. The city of Flagstaff has never spent any time or resources maintaining this small piece of land. In fact, when we were, in fact, we were informed at a site meeting in May of 2020 that this piece of land is too small for the city to even send a crew to maintain it. We have been cleaning and maintaining this yard or this easement for over 70 years. Without expending any of its resources, the city can benefit from the beautification and historical recognition of the south side. According to Real Estate Bryce Doughty, this move will actually make money for the city of Flagstaff. It will generate approximately 11% increase in the amount of property taxes that we pay annually. Both the South Side Association and the Planning and Zoning Commission love our plan for the easement, as they have both voted unanimously in support of it. Our plan focuses on neighborhood beautification and historical recognition, which aligns it perfectly with the award-winning South Side community-specific plan, which was devised by the South Side Association in conjunction with the city of Flagstaff. I started this long process about 16 months ago. As Bryce, as Mr. Doughty stated, I've been, I've been at this for quite a while. And this, this process has been extremely difficult. I was actually on the verge of walking away after I felt city staff had little regard for me as a community member. If I were not so persistent and accepted no as an answer, I would not be here in front of you today, fighting to be heard and demanding to be treated fairly. I haven't expressed my concerns that the city of Flagstaff does not have a formal, unbiased process for us community members to make an abandonment request. In an email sent to me on March 16th, 2021, from Community Development, Community Development Director Dan Folk, he stated, and I quote, "After your meeting with the city manager Greg Clifton and Mayor Evans last fall, the team was asked to create a formal process that takes the request beyond property development team and makes its way to Planning and Zoning Commission for their consideration. Staff has been working with legal to create an application and process to review abandoned public rightofway. Frankly, after the meeting, staff needed to regroup. There was miscommunication on the recommendation. This was a part of the communication breakdown on our part. However, I am glad that the city is recognizing their communication breakdowns. And I'm also happy that the city has been working on developing a formal process, but this has raised concerns. I am sharing Mr. Folk's message for a few reasons. At our site meeting on May 20th, 2020, city manager Greg Clifton told us that our request was being denied because there may be pipes or utility lines under the easement. I informed him that I, I had had a survey done and there were not. He, he then told us that city has granted some abandonment requests in the past and regretted their decision. Therefore, our request was being denied. This is after foots manager, multi-modular planner, Mr. Entz, informed us, informed all of us that if there was a trail, it would be on the south side of Hoskins and wouldn't affect our side of the street. So we were given three different reasons why our request was being denied on that day alone. Without any formal, unbiased process, we are left to wonder why our request was being denied. Was it because we looked, the color of our skin, how we were dressed? In January, planning and zoning, at the planning and zoning meeting, council member- In January, planning and zoning, at the planning and zoning meeting, Councilmember Zimmerman pointed out that we were being, that we are being treated unfairly. Each and every, each and every request must be looked at individually. Every request is unique. And as we, and we as community members deserve for our request to be considered through an unbiased and consistent process. The fact is, this easement has not drawn the city's attention in over seventy years. If so, I assume they would not have allowed two property owners to illegally build onto the easement without consequence. In addition to lack of funding and undeveloped plans, if you notice, if I really focus on what Mr. Intz and Mr. Doherty were saying, they use if, if there was a future improvements, potentially planning. So there's no solid plans for this easement. And one thing that, one very important thing that they left out is that the city has no immediate plans to remove the existing structures from the easement. Can I share my screen, please? Can you guys see my screen?
Yes, sir, I see.
Okay, so they left out these very important pictures. This is the, this is the house directly west to our property. As you can see, they have built a brick wall into the easement. I have been, I have talked to several city staff and in the city, in the planning and zoning meeting, it was asked to Mr. Doherty if they had any immediate plans to remove this brick wall from the easement. And his answer was, no, there's not any immediate plans to remove this brick wall from the easement. So as we are being told no, there's other obstacles to this trail or this use of the easement. And this brick wall is definitely a huge obstacle. I'll also go to the house at the end of the block. This is the house at the end of Hoskins Street. There, as you can see in the background, that's the brick wall that is the parking garage to Mount View Apartments. I have a red line that outlines the easement. This property owner who happens to be NAU built their entire deck fenced in their backyard and their entire driveway is built into the easement. Now, these, the brick wall and this, and this structure here has both been there for, for decades, at least twenty years, and nothing's ever been done. So I circle back to us being treated unfairly. We're being told no, but there's a brick wall to go through, there's a porch and a, and a deck and a backyard and a driveway and a brick wall to go through as well. So I see, I see us as being treated unfairly through this process. It's been long. We, we have worked diligently with the city. I've had to, to call and email and, and reach out to several people. This actually started again sixteen months ago with former, the former Bryce's is the lady that Mrs. Lee that had Bryce's position prior to him. It started with her sixteen months ago. But again, I'm super excited and I'm confident that the City Council will see our determination to work with the City of Flagstaff to make this plan a win-win, as we both strive to add value and beauty to the south side. We have worked diligently with the city throughout this process and are excited about our plans. If you grant our request, I would also like to discuss a lower price, minimum price due to the lack of marketability of this easement and our plans to leave it as open space and use it to erect historical marker. We are also open to partnering with the city to address the affordable housing crisis. We're willing to dedicate one of our units for affordable housing if we can come to an agreement with the easement. We, we, we're not just here asking. We would like to give back to our community as well. We feel this would be very extreme, extremely useful to our community members. My uncle and I thank you for your time and consideration. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Council, do we have any questions of the applicant? City Manager, you have a comment, but I was hoping maybe we can get the questions for the applicant out first here, so.
Indeed, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. City Council? I'm not seeing anything in the chat box currently, but I, I really do appreciate the visualizations, Mr. Hernandez. This really does is very helpful in our decision-making and perception with this, these lots to get a, a ground view of it. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I do want to make a couple of corrections to statements that were just made. Absent my involvement in this, I don't think this matters in front of you. I actually advocated that we develop a process to get this in front of council because it's, concerns a public right-of-way and it should be the decision of the council. When I was on site and there were many people in the meeting, including our former mayor, a statement was made by staff that the matter was denied. And I actually inserted myself into that conversation and made the correction that staff does not make decisions on this. So the suggestion that I made a statement that the request was denied is totally unfounded and erroneous, needs to be corrected. I advocated that this matter get in front of council. I do not weigh in on the merits of the request, but I, I totally respect the applicant's right and desire to bring this request forward. So I just want to make clear on the record what representations were and were not made on site. I think I also heard the applicant make mention that I spoke to the utilities. I have no involvement or knowledge with where utilities are in that street. I would never have commented on something of which I have no basis or familiarity. So thank you for letting me correct the record.
Thank you. City, City Council? Comments, questions? I, I do see a hand up from Mr. Hernandez, and yeah, you are welcome to speak now to that point. Let's.
Yeah. In regards to Mr. Clifton's remarks, I have my Uncle Wilford Chavez here with me, and we remember this conversation. This is the only site meeting. We've never gone through this again, and we remember this as clear as day. So I would, I really, I really wouldn't make that up, and this was told to us. I, I mean, in no way am I fabricating this at all.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Well, at this point, it definitely is a, looking to be more of a council decision here. So we will bring it to our deliberative body to discuss potential actions here. Councilmember Shimoney has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you everyone for the discussion tonight. My question is for staff. Martin, can you go back to that slide that showed the proposed road? And as you're doing that, my question, I guess, is I'll just wait a second.
Apologies, I'm working on it. Sorry, Adam.
Martin, my question is, if we did grant the, the easement to the, to the applicant here, I obviously like the bike lanes, I like the, the road connection. I'm just wondering, would we basically be losing that on-street parking on that side of the parcel? I would assume we wouldn't lose the bike lane, potentially. I'm guessing what's being jeopardized is potentially the, the on-street parking on the north side, side of the street. Is that correct?
Councilmember Shimoney, I think it would be a, a future decision between having on-street parking on both sides or, or reusing that space on one side for the, for the cycle track.
Okay, that, that was my question. Okay, thank you. And yeah, those are my comments for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other members of council?
There it is. So I guess my, my comment was just that, you know, we'd be losing one side of on-street parking potentially, but that is a future discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Rasslin?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tommy Hernandez, for speaking with us and sharing your perspective and your concerns. I'll just jump right to it and say that I am in favor of abandoning this right-of-way. I think it's going to a good purpose and a good cause. And, you know, I will add that I don't think, you know, I wouldn't do this lightly. I understand that perpetuity is a long time. And I see that the city will sometimes have future needs for a space that it owns, that it can't foresee right now. So this needs to be considered very much by a case-by-case basis. But I have toured this area and for myself, I've made the determination that this is a, an appropriate transfer. And I'm hoping council will agree. If you don't, I, I understand. I, I, you know, I really can see both sides of this issue, but I'm in favor of abandonment.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I, as I look at the map, I think it's obvious that this would be a very useful bicycle slash pedestrian route from Mountain View Drive over through this neighborhood to O'Leary. I guess my question for Martin is, it sounds like we're on the, that this foots connection could be happening pretty soon. I presume that Mountain View would stay the way it is up to the point where that wall is and the curve into the parking lot. Could we still put a foots trail through there if we didn't do this abandonment, or would that basically prevent it? And I guess as a bicyclist, I find that riding a bicycle right next to a whole line of parked cars is dangerous because if somebody opens the door in front of you, it's, it is dangerous. So I, I would, I want to see a foots trail through here. So I guess I'll ask Mr. Entz to comment on the practicality of it if we gave up this right-of-way.
Councilmember? I, I think that, I think the question becomes that at some point in the future, we had, we'll have to make decisions about how the right-of-way space and how the road is used. And those, the options, I think at the time, will be on-street parking, a parkway for the sidewalk across that parcel or that, or the cycle track connection on, on the street. There's, there's room in the existing right-of-way for all those things, but if we abandon a portion of it, then we'll, we'll have future decisions to make about how that, how that street gets used. The, the one, the, the connection at the very west end of the street onto NAU's campus uses a part of that existing Hoskins right-of-way, but otherwise it, it sort of stands alone in, in that it could be built with, you know, a piece of that right-of-way, a small piece of the, of the cemetery parcel, and then, and then something onto the, to get it onto the NAU campus. So in, in that sense, it, it sort of stands alone as a project.
Right, well, I think both parking and the foots trail are both very valuable in this area. So I guess I'm leaning towards not granting the abandonment. Then I'll listen to the further discussion of other council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Solis has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to, I want to acknowledge the applicant's passion and, and effort in sending this for council discussion. I do also acknowledge staff effort and, and bringing this to council for discussion and also eventually setting a policy precedence when it comes to abandonment of a public right-of-way. I have a question to staff. If, if the request is denied, will there be opportunity to erect a, a sign in the area of recognizing the historic value of the community?
Mr. Folk?
I thank you, Mayor Deezee, and thanks for the question. Yeah, I mean, I think use of public right-of-way for that type of sign is completely appropriate. So the sign could be erected either in public right-of-way, or if it is abandoned, the new property owner could put that sign up as well. So in either situation, I think we could find a place for the sign.
Thank you, Mr. Folk and Mr. Mayor, if I may weigh in. I understand that, you know, abandoning the right-of-way would also mean that the city will forfeit the, the site, the cycle track and the foots connection and, and potential on-street parking. So I believe there's a strong justification for future future public use, but that benefits not only the neighborhood, the neighborhood of south side, but the entire community looking into using the foots, the foots trails and connecting through the, the Hoskins Avenue. So and having said that, I, I hope this also serves us a continuing challenge and commitment to, to staff and our, our community to, to work together and come up with some workable solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Councilmember Rasslin?
Sorry, playing with the mute button. So I, I forgot to mention earlier that I'm not concerned about the on-street parking, which is one of the reasons why I'm in favor of abandonment. I do think we need the foots access there, but I remember being reassured by our city staff that where there's a will, there's a way. My question right now is about those properties that are extending onto the city's right-of-way. What are we going to do about them moving forward in the, in the present here? I, I, I think some of those encroachments need to be addressed.
Mr. Folk?
I guess I'll take a stab at this one. I would say that the improvements that you see encroaching into the right-of-way are pretty typical of what you'd find all around the community. Some may have received permits, some may have not. It's hard to know the history on a lot of things. But we've talked about this at our internal team, our property and development team. You know, we do have a formal process where we issue encroachment permits for improvements within the right-of-way. But again, the kind of improvements you see are typical are, for example, in my neighborhood, you see mailboxes that people have maybe built a column around it, and then they did like a nice little decorative wall or something. And so my point is, we do see these improvements around town. Typically, what spurs the relocation of them is if we have a project, we're putting We're putting in a sidewalk, we're, you know, rebuilding the street, we have a utility project. That's usually what triggers uh, those types of improvements having to be relocated or removed. Um, but again, it is pretty typical. You will find them all around the community. Um, and we do struggle a little bit when we encounter them and we need to, and we're trying to make improvements in a neighborhood. I know we saw some of these in the projects the last two years, um, over here in, uh, the neighborhood off of 180 there, where we're doing utilities and sidewalks and uh, you do find encroachments that need to be relocated, but, um, so that's my answer to that.
Thank you, Mr. Folk. Uh, Mr. Doty, did you have a further comment on that?
Just to follow up on the, uh, the encroachments on NAU's, um, adjacent to NAU's property, they have requested, um, and, uh, the city abandoned that property, so it could go through an abandonment process.
Thank you, Mr. Doty. Um, Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you again, Mayor. Um, it's not the subject for tonight, obviously, but the abandonment of the, the area owned by the NAU would be completely out of the question, a no. Uh, because that is needed, absolutely needed for access between there. This property is a little more in a gray area, but I would like to point out that it seems that the trend in this area, like it or not, is that we're going to much higher density and, um, in the whole area. And what does that mean? That means that foots, uh, routes and pedestrian and bicycle routes will become increasingly more important in the future. I, I agree with Mr. Aslan in that, uh, in this area, I think the, the transportation, the bicycle and pedestrian is more important than parking, but I also think parking's gonna be very important in the future as we go to higher density. So I'm still leaning towards denying the, uh, the, uh, request. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a tough one. Huh, so, uh, a question for staff. If we did abandon this, this, this specific piece, that would obviously impact the entire road. Um, would it basically be that there would be on-street parking for the adjacent areas, or, um, can, can you just walk me through that scenario?
I'm kind of filling in tonight for our city engineer, Rick Barrett. He's off this week, and we coordinated this item. Um, Councilmember Shimoney, I guess what, I guess I don't understand the question.
If we did abandon this, this, the specific parcel, what we're talking about tonight, um, how would that impact the, the, the street moving forward, uh, holistically? Knowing that this is just a small portion of that street.
Yeah, I think some, when you look at that cross-section of what could be, when we show you the full extent of the cross-section and how, all the improvements that could be made within that, it would really, it just comes down to council having to make a decision on what do you want to give up? Um, is it the parkway, which is an area between a sidewalk and a curb, where you see a tree right now? Um, right now, there is no parkway between the sidewalk and the curbs. You see that on the street. And that's, that's really not our ideal situation for pedestrians. Um, but no, it's just a matter of giving something up. Do you want to give up parking on one side of the street? Um, I'm hearing support for a cycle track separated from the sidewalk. So my guess is the recommendation from staff would be to probably give up the parking. Uh, maybe there's no parkway on the north side, and so you could get some gain there. But it's really just about picking and choosing what you remove from this cross-section that's up on the screen right now.
Okay, um, would there be a way to build with parking on both sides of the streets? Assuming we also kept the, the, the foots or the, the separate bike lane?
Well, I mean, you can do the math. You'd have to, you're talking about abandoning, is it 14 feet? So you basically gotta take 14 feet out of this cross-section. I think the request is 14 feet, isn't that right, Bryce?
Correct.
So you can do the math. I mean, you basically, you gotta take out something that adds up to 14 on here. Uh, a sidewalk and a little two-foot buffer is seven, and then you take out on-street parking. So you could remove the sidewalk on the south side and keep the eight-foot cycle track. You could remove the parking and the sidewalk. That's one way to get your 14 feet. Uh, you could just remove parking on both sides of the street and keep the sidewalks and the buffer zones and the three-foot, um, planting area. So yeah, I mean, it's just a mix-and-match decision time. I think the travel lanes at 10 and 1/2 are pretty standard. I don't know if Jeff Baumann's on the call. I don't know if we go any less than 10 and 1/2 feet for travel lane. It is a local road. Uh, probably doesn't get a whole lot of car traffic through the neighborhood. Um, maybe you could traffic diet the, the lane widths. Uh, people don't like that when people park on the street, and then you have to go through one car at a time. So, I mean, those are just operational things you can make decisions on.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Um, but it does, that, that, that struggle that people have does slow people down, right?
Which frankly is a good thing. Uh, you kind of want people in cars to feel congested, so they drive slower through neighborhoods. That's actually a design, uh, strategy to get people to slow down. If you build it nice and wide with wide travel lanes, they're gonna go a lot faster.
Exactly.
I think that's.
I, I agree. Um, okay, so, so to get to the point, Mayor, um, I think I'm in favor of us banning this parcel. I haven't really heard too much. That makes me really hold back. Um, I do have some concerns, but I think we can work with it. Um, I would be curious, uh, as a city manager, if you have, uh, anything else you'd like to state about the direction that we headed. But, um, I, I think that I am in favor of us abandoning this parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'll restate a second time. I personally have no concerns about this, nor have I ever. Uh, fortunately, the, the onsite meeting was attended by many people, uh, quite a few staff people and our former mayor and two other elected officials. Um, I think there may be some perhaps confusion as to who said what, but from a staff level, and I'll restate it over and over again, it is not our call. Our call is to make recommendations to this body uh, on anything concerning a transfer of, of property rights, including a right-of-way. In this instance, I do not have enough knowledge here to weigh in as to whether I think it's a, a good request or, or not. Uh, I do actually empathize with the neighborhood that has had um, some green space, I'm, I'm using that term loosely, between the sidewalk and the street on the north side of that street that has been un cared for, for many years. Uh, it's, it's, in having been onsite, it was a, a bit of a unsightly uh, streetscape to, to see. But, uh, I give deference to other staff members, engineers, planners, real estate experts, as to whether it's a, a good idea or not to abandon. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Well, I'll, uh, chime in here. Um, personally, the, um, the, um, the thing about this, what I'm saying here is the fact that at the adjacent property, if we're going to see this potential fruit, future use, this isn't just a matter of the property that's being abandoned. We're gonna have to knock down somebody's brick wall, um, by the adjacent property. We're going to do, I'll have to do a lot of other things that are going to affect other residents on that north side. Uh, so I have concerns about that, this potential future use in that regard, that we're going to get pushed back on the other fronts doing this model a, as we're seeing here. So, um, in addition, I, you know, if, if this is a matter of having six, eight properties available, that also is something that we need to consider here, because obviously we need housing. So, um, I am, well, without expanding too much, I am in favor of, uh, abandoning the property. And I am seeing Councilmember Sweet having a comment here.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for speaking tonight and giving us, um, your information. I went out and I did visit the site, and I am in favor of abandoning this parcel. I do agree with Mr. or Councilmember Aslan that where there is a will, there is a way, and I think that in the future we can have some good discussion on how this will work, but for now, I agree with the abandonment and, um, I appreciate everyone's information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Um, well, with that, I think, um, since we have been getting some various views, unless there's oh, well, Councilmember McCarthy has a comment.
Well, thank you. Uh, it seems like we're coming to a consensus, or at least a majority vote. Um, I guess if we're gonna abandon this and sell this piece of property to this landowner, it would seem that we would make the same offer to the people right next to him. I believe there's two parcels right next to him, or that may be one, I'm not sure. Um, and if they want to keep their wall in the in that area, then they should buy that land from the city in a similar manner to this, uh, what's up on the agenda tonight. Again, and I'll restate, again, I guess it's not necessary tonight, but the one to the west going, connecting into, uh, NAU, that one, uh, I feel very strongly about, that that should not be abandoned. I can live with abandoning this one. Um, that's my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Well, uh, with that, um, I do believe we need a motion here, and city attorney, I did just see your text, but I'll, uh, let you, let you come on, comment, uh, here publicly on that.
Yeah, just, uh, simply as, as, um, Division Director, Chief Director, Dan Folk indicated, it is an ordinance, obviously, we have to have a motion. Um, I know Councilmember McCarthy referenced consensus for coming closer to a vote, but there would need to be a motion uh, and a second, just as any other first read on an ordinance.
Uh, thank you, city attorney. Um, and with the divergent thoughts on this, I think it might be good for, uh, Ms. Salzberg to take roll call on it. Uh, but I am seeing Councilmember Aslan, you have a motion? If you'd like to.
I do.
Yes.
Remind me what agenda item this is? I'm trying to look it up here and.
10C.
10C, thank you very much. I would like to move that we, um, abandoned the property, the 1,400 square feet of the Hoskins Avenue public right-of-way adjacent to 709 South O'Leary Street. And provide for delegation of authority and repeal of conflicting ordinance, severability, and establishing an effective date.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Aslan. I will second that motion. Um, yes, and Councilmember Solis is noting in the chat that this, uh, is a motion to read ordinance number 2021-12 by title only for the first time. Um, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Yeah, and thank you for reading that title for us as, for extra clarification. Um, so, uh, with that, I second this motion. Is there any further direction? Um, this, Ms. Salzberg, would you take a roll call on this for, um, clarification?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Um, Councilmember Solis.
Hi.
Mayor DC.
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yes.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Aslan.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Maya Reid.
Uh, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff abandoning and authorizing the sale of approximately 1,000, excuse me, 1,400 square feet of Hoskins Avenue public right-of-way adjacent to 709 South O'Leary Street, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Okay, thank you, city clerk. Well, it is 4:50 now. I think it'd be a good time to take a 10-minute break. Uh, so, uh, I will see you all back here at 5 o'clock sharp, and, uh, we'll get to it, so. Thank you all.
Are back streaming.
Oh. Thank you, Ms. Salzberg. Well, we are down to Agenda Item 10D. This is, uh, consideration and adoptions of Resolutions Number 21-18, 2021-19, and 2021-20, which includes, uh, resolutions, uh, amending the Flagstaff Automotive Sales Tax Rebate Program to further the cl- city's climate action goals, uh, resolution, uh, amending the Flagstaff Business Attraction Job Creation Incentive Program, and a resolution, uh, amending the Development Reinvestment Incentive Program to assist in attracting new businesses. Uh, city staff, Mr. Fitchett.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jack Fitchett. I'm your Business Attraction Manager. And, uh, tonight I have a very brief presentation to go over some of the minor revisions to each of, uh, these three policies. And, uh, Stacy, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we had a public comment, uh, perhaps before this. Did we want to take that now and, or after my presentation?
Uh, Mayor, would you prefer to take it before public participation, uh, before the staff presentation or after? I was going to call them during the presentation.
Yeah, let's take them after this presentation and before we get into council discussion.
Absolutely, that sounds great. Okay, so I'm going to take off my camera here and just jump right in. Okay, so like I had mentioned, we are, uh, going to be discussing some proposed minor revisions to, uh, the three incentive policies that you see before you. Uh, but real quickly, I wanted to take a moment to talk about some of the success that we've had so far with these policies. Uh, for the Sustainable Automotive Sales Tax Rebate, uh, this slide is actually slightly outdated since the time I submitted it. We've actually had, uh, nine successful applicants so far, uh, again, all hybrid vehicles, which would be that second tier within the policy. And we currently have 13 pending applications, 12 would, 12 of which are fully electric vehicles, which is awesome. Uh, the job creation incentive has had one successful applicant, uh, Catalyst Space Technologies, who you all heard from a few weeks back. They are a fledgling aerospace company that is, uh, that has recently relocated to Flagstaff up at our NACET facility, uh, that is going to be doing some satellite work. And, uh, the Development Reinvestment Incentive currently has not had any successful applications, uh, but we are expecting an application here soon from our, uh, from Whitehall Industries, the new, uh, electric vehicle automa- automotive manufacturer that I just relocated to that former Walgreens building. Uh, additionally, uh, these incentives were approved back in July 7th of 2020 to refresh council. And since then, uh, staff has been busy, you know, promoting these policies over the last 10 months through the Daily Sun, the Flagstaff Business, Business News, uh, some various other advertisement opportunities in our social media. So by the alterations, uh, staff has heard from some of our stakeholders and our partners, some which mean the Chamber of Commerce here in town, uh, the Economic Collaborative of Northern Arizona. I've spoken to many of the general managers at our local automotive dealers, as well as some of our successful applicants and some other businesses that are interested in, uh, coming to Flagstaff, and have gotten some input from them and have incorporated those into the policies tonight. So that is largely where a lot of these alterations are coming from. Uh, the minor revisions that you do see within those policies are hoping to make these, uh, incentives more widely used and available for these businesses and just ultimately be more efficient and effective. Uh, so going to the first, uh, the first alterations within the Sustainable Automotive Sales Tax Rebate, uh, the two major policy revisions within this, uh, within this incentive is we are looking to revise the MPG fuel-efficient rebate bracket. Uh, that's gonna be that third rebate within the policy, uh, the lowest tier, and the least amount that the sales tax would be rate rebated. We're looking to drop that from 35 miles per gallon in-city rating to 30 miles per gallon in-city rating. And the reason for this being, uh, the conversations that I've had with, uh, some of the general managers at our local automotive dealerships is that the, their current vehicle stock, the brand-new vehicles, 2022, uh, they are just not quite. vehicles, 2022, they are just not quite reaching that 35 MPG rating. Many of them are either at that 32 or 30 MPG rating. And so in order to further accommodate these dealerships and make them competitive and attract more sales to them, we wanted to just slightly reduce this, again, to stay in line with our sustainability goals, but also further the economic development purpose of this incentive and hopefully drive more purchases towards them and get some rebates back into the pockets of those purchasers. The second major change is adding a second version of how this rebate could be facilitated. Again, some of the general managers and some of the sales reps at these dealerships felt that it would, this, this rebate would be take more widely taken advantage of if the dealership was able to directly facilitate the rebate to the purchaser or the applicant when the vehicle was purchased. Currently, the way the policy is set up is that once the purchaser has purchased their new vehicle, they apply through the city and then we, we issue their rebate. With this change in the facilitation, we would just be giving the ability for the dealerships to directly rebate the purchaser once they purchase their vehicle. And then we would facilitate that rebate amount back to the dealership should all of the documentation be correct. Moving to the second incentive policy, the job creation incentive, the major change within this incentive is changing the maximum award amount from $15,000 to $25,000. The purpose of this change is that for businesses that are in the range of 10 to 30 or 40 employees, the $15,000 is an attractive amount and is quite meaningful. But when we start to look at attracting larger businesses, you know, once we get up above that 50 employee mark up to, you know, 150, we wanted to make that attractive to them as well and, you know, provide this incentive, you know, a little bit more oomph to make it attractive for them as well, which is the reason to make, bring it up to $25,000. Additionally, towards the end of that policy document, you'll see that there's some additional reporting and tracking requirements for any successful applicant. And that's mainly just to ensure that we are remaining in compliance with the Arizona Gift Clause law. So those are the two main alterations within that incentive. Lastly, the third policy is the Development Reinvestment Incentive. The main alteration within this one is to change the window of opportunity for a new business that has relocated to town, giving them the ability to use this, this construction sales tax incentive for any future expansions on their current site that they would like to move into, or if they're looking to expand even further, create a new facility, much like how, how Whitehall envisioned their plan here over the next three to four years, just giving them the ability to use this incentive for a longer period of time, which we believe will get it some additional use and hopefully see some additional applications roll in because of this. And similar to the last job creation incentive, we've also added in some additional reporting and tracking requirements that are identical to what you would see in the job creation incentive. So that is, concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I think we'll, we'll take public comment and then happy to take any questions or comments you have on these three policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitchett. Ms. Salzberg, the public comment, please.
Mr. Porto, could you please go ahead?
Hello, Mayor DC and the council members. My name is Joe Porto, and I'm the General Manager of Family Volkswagen. I'd just like to take a moment to thank you for considering the Resolution 2021-18 and the amendments to it. It's, it's been a really business. We just recently launched an all-electric vehicle. And when the customers here locally were able to order the vehicle, we received a dozen orders right off the bat just from the locals. And that was basically off of the federal income tax that they had heard about. They really didn't know about the city income tax. And we recently have vehicles on the lot and they're able to come and take a look at them. And along with that and the aging Daily Sun article that was done at the dealership revenue tax rebate program, we've had another three, and that's another three orders from locals, and that's in the last four weeks. There, I look at this as for the businesses, for all the car dealerships, because it's all, it's all that the dealers are looking at right now is how are we going to become more fuel-intensive, how are we going to move into the electric arena? The more fuel-intensive vehicles, what they've been doing for a long time now. And I, and I believe that the amendment for the efficient vehicle is something that is and, and, you know, I mean, it's going to bring on jobs. Not only that, we have not just the local, but they're offering it to the people that don't live here, we're giving them a tax credit. So that'll bring in more and I know you guys wisdom, you guys thought about that, that's probably some of the reasons why you're doing it. You know, it is true, it brings those people in from the other areas for our surrounding areas, including being in some areas, because we use the vehicle sometimes that they don't have down there. So it does make a huge difference to not only the local, but the people that want to come. But it, it's going to help the economy. And lastly, I, I really like the ability to have a personal application for the purchaser. We have all the application right here at this time when it's the same vehicle, so it'd be just real simple for us to pull out the application and get it submitted. From the Now, you guys feel free to ask me any questions if you want to, but I just wanted to thank you for your time and appreciate everything you're doing for the state.
Thank you, Mr. Porto. Council, do we have any questions, Mr. Porto, before we turn this inward? I'm not seeing anything in the box. So with that, I will open this up to council comments or questions of city staff, questions and stuff. Otherwise, I got, I got a motion handy here, so. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. I'll get my cameras turned on and everything. I do support all of the changes that we've just discussed. But I respectfully request that we treat the first item separately in a separate motion and possibly the next two either together or separately. And the reason is, is on the first item, I completely agree with it and I'm ready to support it. But as I read the other two items, there's some unacceptable ambiguity in them. For instance, in the Development Reinvestment Incentive, which is the third item, Item D, in the middle of the first page, it says, "And Other Eligible City Fees." I have no idea what that means. No one in the world knows what that means. So what is an eligible city fee? It needs to be defined. So it seems very broad and undefined unless I miss something. Also, it has a phrase, "Not Limited To" in the paragraphs. It basically can give, we can give these benefits for any reason, and there's nothing defined anywhere. So what I would suggest is that we pass the first item and, which is 2021-18. And that the dash 19 and the dash 20 be sent back to staff and in two weeks from now, and I can formalize all this in a motion after we discuss it. And that in two weeks, the other two items come back to us where we're defining some of these totally open-ended ambiguities and then have a discussion. And I anticipate at that point, I would vote in favor of all three. So that's my suggestion. Before I make any motions, I'll let there be more comment from council.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Mr. Fitchett, did you want to chime in at all regarding the Councilmember McCarthy's concerns about that particular language?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, for, for your comment. I think we can certainly alter some of that, that language, our Councilmember McCarthy, if it would make you feel more comfortable, would make it less ambiguous. I will say, just to kind of describe to council how these reimbursement requests would work and how they have worked in the past with our first successful applicant, is the city is not writing a, a check for the full amount and just saying, like, we send it to the business and say, you know, this is how you can use it. They actually have to submit specified reimbursement requests that are then reviewed by our economic development and legal teams to ensure that they meet the intent of these policies. That being said, the "not limited to" language is really to capture in this reinvestment incentive, that's really to capture a variety of different things. So for example, if a new business is coming to town and they're building a new facility and they have some, they have some public benefit that needs to be added, such as sidewalks or streets, lighting, et cetera, that's really what those would be intended to be used for, and that's to capture those requests, which is why we didn't try to put every possible request in those incentive policies. We tried to keep it concise. That being said, if the business was going to be using it for, you know, some sort of public infrastructure or some other public benefit use, that would be specified in that reimbursement request. And then we would, you know, look at it with our, with our team and with legal to make sure that it, that it was acceptable and going forward. But to your point, Councilmember, I'm certainly open to adjusting that language that would make you more comfortable. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fitchett. Well, why don't we knock out this first one real quick and then if council wants to chime in with their thoughts on the job creation and the development reinvestment incentives?
Can I get the motion on the first one?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
All right, so I move that we read Resolution 2021-18 by title only.
I second that motion. I have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So.
That motion carries. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council amending the updated Flagstaff Automotive Sales Tax Rebate Program to further the city's climate action goals and to support local automotive dealers.
I move to adopt.
I second that motion. I have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy to adopt Resolution Number 2021-18, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, go team.
Aye.
That motion carries. Now down to the Flagstaff Business Attraction Job Creation Incentive Program, as well as the Business Attraction Development Reinvestment Incentive Program. Council, thoughts on Councilmember McCarthy's suggestion for more refined language before approval? And I will entertain motions to that fact and/or to accepting it as, as written right now.
Can I make a motion, Mayor?
Go right ahead.
So I move that we what's the proper word? Not table. I move that we postpone the vote on 2021-19 and 20 for two weeks and to give staff time to refine and to define the language. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Attorney does give the thumbs up on the word postpone, so we're on key here. Before we look at a second motion, I do have a comment from Mr. McIntyre as well as Mr. Fitchett, if you need something clarifying or whatnot.
Good afternoon and evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. I was just going to offer some potential language. I know there, there's a motion on the table now, so I don't know if it's, it's too late, but I thought if there was some language that was acceptable as an amendment, perhaps we could have the action completed with amended language now. And I was just going to offer the language or other expenses that provide direct community benefit to potentially substitute for the "not limited to" and see if that was something that might be able to reach a better comfort level and, and reach a space where we could take the action. Of course, if you prefer the two-week postponement, that's fine as well. Just wanted to see if there was an opportunity to address it.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I will personally would prefer to be able to just get this out of the way if you're comfortable with that, Councilmember McCarthy. Obviously, you might have to withdraw if your motion, if that is the case, but I'd like to hear your feedback on that proposed amendment.
I think in the case where it says "not limited to," that would probably be okay, but there's the other case where it says, "And Other Eligible City Fees." To me, that's completely nebulous. And so I think I'll stick with my motion, and if it fails, then I, no problem, no hard feelings.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Well, I do have a motion to postpone this two weeks by Councilmember McCarthy. Do I have a second from council?
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? No?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries to postpone for two weeks, and that would be for both Resolution Number 2021-19 as well as Resolution Number 2021-20. Unless, City Attorney, am I correctly doing that procedurally, that we can do that together? Or do we need to do a separate, separate motion?
It, it was a motion only for that one as well. Mayor, I would appreciate it if you'd call out for the record how the vote went. I wasn't clear on who the aye votes were in favor of the motion to postpone and the nay votes.
Excellent. Well, I will let Ms. Salzberg, if you could do a real call, roll call, real quick roll call, that would be great. So we have that clear for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one moment here. My computer is struggling, just, I'm sorry, just one second. Okay. Mayor DC?
Nope.
Vice Mayor's not here. Councilmember Sweet?
No.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Aye.
Councilmember Shimoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Aslan?
Yes.
Councilmember Salas?
Hi.
I have a 4-2 vote with ayes with a passing, sorry.
Thank you. And just to clarify, City Attorney, we're going to have to do that yet again for the Business Attraction for Resolution Number 2021-20, correct?
Mayor, I thought my motion was for both of those, but if, just to make it clear, we could do a second.
I apologize if I didn't understand that. I, I didn't note that in my notes, that if it was for both. City Clerk, did you note that it was for both in your notes, in your minutes?
Thank you, Sterling. Yes, I had the motion as both 19 and 20.
Then you're good, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for consideration.
Sounds good. Just, yeah, just wanted to make sure procedurally, we didn't have to do a motion for them separately. But yeah, I also noted that it was both, but excellent. Well, that brings us down to Agenda Item 10, 10E. Consideration Adoption of Resolution Number 2021-15, a resolution approving the City Flagstaff's 2021-2025 Consolidated Plan and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, as well as the Consideration Adoption of Resolution Number 2021-16, a resolution approving the City Flagstaff's 2021 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of HUD, consider, as well as the Consideration Adoption of Resolution Number 2021-17, a resolution approving the City Flagstaff's 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of HUD. All right, Ms. Pavlich?
It's quite a mouthful. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me back this evening. So two weeks ago, you directed staff to reach out directly to the CDBG-defined target neighborhoods for their participation and comments on the consolidated and annual action plans. Those neighborhoods, just as a reminder, include La Plaza Vieja, South Side and Pine Knoll, and Sunnyside. And together, those neighborhoods, the neighborhood and community associations together are referred to as the League of Neighborhoods. So Housing was able to hold a virtual meeting with the League of Neighborhoods, and we discussed the CDBG annual action and consolidated plans, as well as the public participation and project selection process for the annual CDBG entitlement. Our discussions really focused on city transparency regarding how city projects and activities and target neighborhoods are recommended by the various city departments and how public participation in that process could be solicited. and how public participation in that process could be solicited. So this summer and annually thereafter, the city will hold a public meeting for the residents of the CDBG-designated target areas as an opportunity for the city to provide information about activities and efforts being undertaken in those target areas. This will also serve as an opportunity for the residents from these neighborhoods to provide insight into the identified priorities and give feedback about city-proposed projects, um, and any potential unmet needs. The first meeting will be held this summer. It'll be outdoors at the Murdoch Center and it will include multiple city departments such as capital improvement, housing, parks and rec, planning and code compliance, and it will, we will also encourage participation from council members and commissioners. Um, we're really excited for this additional outreach opportunity and to have a more deliberate process for community residents and city departments to communicate about efforts and needs in these neighborhoods. Um, as a result, we have amended the CDBG Citizen Participation Plan that is submitted as a section of the five-year consolidated plan to include this annual meeting. Um, so thank you so much for your time and if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlik. I will note, I really appreciate how quickly you, uh, two weeks ago, uh, sent out the email, set up the meeting and I heard about it afterward and how, um, much better everyone felt about the situation. And I just want to thank you for how attentive and quickly that you set that up and did it. It, it means a lot to our community and, uh, our responsiveness as our, uh, city staff, so I appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Mayor. It was a great meeting. It was really, um, wonderful to meet with those folks and, and brainstorm with them.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Shimonie has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, Christine. Thank you again for your work. I did speak to someone that part of one of the neighborhood associations and and they were extremely grateful for the additional communication, so, so thank you. Um, and Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion when appropriate.
Well, I'm not saying any Cs and Qs, so, uh, do it up, Shimonie.
Uh, some will do. Thank you, Mayor. I move that we read Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen by title only for the first time.
I will second that motion. Have a, a motion by Councilmember Shimonie, seconded by myself. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 May I move?
Oh, I apologize.
Aye.
Any, uh, uh, any opposed? That motion carries. Um, get to, get to city clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving the city of Flagstaff PY twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five consolidated plan and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD.
Mayor, I, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen.
I second that motion. I have a motion, uh, Councilmember Shimonie, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Well, I'd like to motion to read Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen by title only. Oh, sorry, one moment. Uh, city attorney, can I just do both of these all together, these next two, or do we have to do them separate?
Yes, you can, Mayor.
All right, excellent. Well, I would like to motion to read Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen as well as Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen by title only. Do I have a second?
Second, McCarthy.
Motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Resolution twenty twenty, twenty. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving the city of Flagstaff twenty twenty-one analysis, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving the city of Flagstaff twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two annual action plan and authorizing its submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Excellent. Well, I motion to adopt resolutions number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen as well as, uh, number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by myself, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. All those in favor? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, sir.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Pavlik.
Thank you all so much. Have a great night.
Too. Uh, that brings us to agenda item ten F. This is the consideration adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash O six. An ordinance of the city council, the city Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff zoning map to rezone approximately eleven acres of real property generally located at one fifty-one West High Country Trail, APNs one twelve dash O five dash O O one W and one twelve dash O five dash O one one from the estate residential ER zone to the medium-density residential MR zone with conditions providing for severability authority for clerical corrections and establishing an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Alexandra Puccarelli, current planning manager. I've received a request from the applicant for a four-week continuance. Uh, that would put this item on the June first, uh, council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Puccarelli. I would like to entertain a motion from council to post, postpone this, uh, until the June first, um, meeting.
Mayor, some moves.
And I have a motion by Councilmember Shimonie. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now motion seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Uh, so that's, it's to be five-one and, uh, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us down to agenda item number eleven, which is our council liaison report.
Five-one or six-one?
Uh, five-one. Uh, Vice Mayor is unfortunately not able to, is not here to.
Yeah.
No problem. So, agenda item number eleven, our council liaison reports. I'll, uh, I'll, I'm gonna go down the list for the liaison reports and we'll go up the list for two front. How about that? So, uh, Councilmember Aslan, do you have a liaison report?
Not at this time.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Uh, nothing now, thank you.
Councilmember Salas.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Tourism Commission meeting last week. And, um, the, the numbers for March accommodation indicators are promising. Actually, the, 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 the revenue occupancy and the revenue per available room exceeded the twenty nineteen numbers. So that's very promising, uh, which also indicates that accommodation indicators for, for the state of Arizona have remarkably increased as well. Our, um, our tourism partner stakeholders are, are, um, gearing up for, for, uh, summer. Uh, and also, uh, creating awareness for fire awareness. And also the acts of kindness that, that, uh, Ms. Heidi Hansen, our Economic Vitality Director, has mentioned earlier. And lastly, but not the least, it's National Tourism Week this week, May second to eight. And to National Travel and Eco-Tourism Week. And tomorrow, the Discover Flagstaff Partners and St- Stakeholder holders are, um, hosting, uh, trash pickup uh, from, from Thor Park to Ma- Mars Hill from ten thirty to twelve thirty. Um, there will, there will be, uh, a gathering at about twelve thirty at the Milligan House. So this is the tourism service day. And, um, I look forward to participating to the event after the Metro Plan Meeting, so at least I'll be able to pick up trash for at least thirty minutes. And then, um, oh yeah, that's it for the, for the, um, liaison update. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, couple of things. This, yesterday, the nine-one-one diversion group met and that's a little bit separate than the alternate response group. The diversion group is working with the CRN, the Crisis Response Network, and, and Taros locally to divert mental health-specific calls from, um, our police department to the Crisis Response Network. And then at times diverting it to Taros. So we had a good meeting. Um, we haven't met in a, in a little while, so it was good to hear an update and talk about how to improve services and build upon what we're doing. And so that discussion's happening and we're, we're looking to do, uh, continuously better with that diversion effort and better promote to the public the new effort and the new opportunity that the public has to utilize the CRN Crisis Response Network and at times Taros, the mobile unit, when it's appropriate for their needs locally. So we're gonna be putting out a press release at some point and trying to get some, some more coverage in the community to better understand the services being provided, um, by our nine-one-one dispatch. And then, uh, I got, I had a chance to meet with, um, sustainability and ecotourism. Those were the topics discussed. Ralph from our CVV department, um, put on a great meeting that was bringing together folks in tourism across the states to discuss best practices and, and collaboration potential. And so we had our first meeting and it went really well and we're looking forward to future meetings. And, um, the group was very, um, excited about the discussion and had a great discussion, um, in regards to how to best empower our tourists to be part of the solution and be in line with our climate goals and our sustainability goals. Um, that is all I had. Thank you, Mayor, and yep, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, there is a B-PAC meeting this coming Monday at four o'clock and we'll be talking about the grants, um, coming in from the Beautification and Action Grant Process. There are five of them. The Murdoch Center Garden Alley Art, Tara Birds Community Garden, the Juvenile Court mural, and the East Flagstaff Community Library Planters and Art benches. I'm excited to see, uh, the presentations on these grant applications. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you much. I guess the, um, only update I have, at least on the liaison reports, is that, uh, regarding the Arizona League of, uh, Cities and Towns, I have, uh, applied for appointment for the Committee on Budget Finance and Economic Development. So we'll see where that goes. Uh, we haven't met in a little while, so we'll, uh, I'll keep you updated in the future on all that. Uh, otherwise, we are down to agenda item number twelve, which is our city manager report.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, as is typically the case, I don't, uh, I did not call anything out for discussion here and I just, uh, tried to highlight in the report, uh, a few, a few noteworthy things involving our staff. Uh, we, uh, wish Lisa Adams with Water Services, uh, a successful retirement, uh, after, um, a long tenure with the city, twenty-eight years. Nice write-up of her and a photo on the front page. And, uh, some updates from our fire department, uh, addressing some heroics of late including some life-saving measures, uh, wonderful, uh, outcomes and, uh, much, uh, much appreciation for their great service. Also, uh, made note of a, um, an award of, uh, to Officer Nicholas Ruby, who was honored by the Exchange Club as the twenty twenty uh, Flag Police Department Officer of the Year. Nice photo and write-up on him. A lot of little tidbits from Public Works, um, kind of running the spectrum. And, uh, then I followed up with a nice little, uh, blurb regarding our new graduate in the city clerk's office. I'm speaking, of course, of state.
He's fragging.
City manager, you're, uh, frozen up there. City manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I, I just got a message on my computer that, um, something is, went bad. So I don't know if, did, were you able to catch my narrative?
Right, we're right at the new graduate in.
Yes, and I, I ended with that. Uh, yeah. You know, anytime, uh, you lose me and when I'm talking about our city clerk, you, you have every right to be suspicious that maybe she's, uh, behind the controls on that, but I think this one was on my end. I was just noting her, uh, Masters of Public Administration, um, degree that was, uh, successfully achieved just last Friday. Thank you.
That's awesome. Congratulations, Stacy. That's, that's really cool. And you're gonna have to. Yes, yeah. That's awesome. All right, well, that brings us down to agenda item thirteen, which is our, uh, informational items and reports from council and staff and future agenda item requests. And as noted, I will go in the opposite order this time, so Councilmember Sweet, you're on the spot.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, everyone, for tonight. And I just wanted to congratulate, um, Lisa Adams for her twenty-eight years of service. That is an amazing accomplishment. Happy retirement. And also to Stacy for getting your masters. Well deserved, my friend. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't have much to add. I just wanted to also congratulate those highlighted in the city manager's report. And especially give a, a shout-out to our city clerk Stacy, uh, who evaluated ninety-one incorporated cities and towns in Arizona and, and basically reviewed their public hearing processes to ensure that we're doing the best we can locally. So it's great to have you on our team, Stacy. We're really, really proud of your efforts and, and service. Um, thank you, Mayor. Good meeting, everybody, and, and see you soon.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things from my end. Uh, first, grateful, thankful, heart to everyone on Team Flagstaff and special shout-out to Ms. Salzberg for obtaining her master's degree. And I would be interested in, um, in reading your study, um, on public engagement in the time of COVID. I also wanna commend the mayor for, uh, his initiative on declaring the, the Nurses' Week this week. It's, it's very, it, 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 it's very much needed. Uh, not only nurses in our community, I'm also giving shout-out to nurses in my family. I do have nurses and, and, um, my cousins and my, um, nephews and nieces are nurses in Phoenix, in Florida, in Houston, in, um, New Zealand, Abu Dhabi, uh, and, uh, UK. So, thank you to, uh, all the nurses, uh, worldwide. I do wanna also, uh, create a space to celebrate Asian Pacific American Heritage Month this month of May. Paying tribute to the generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched America's history and are instrumental in, in its future success. So, uh, I believe there are some agencies, uh, celebrating, um, Asia-Pacific Islander Heritage, American Heritage Month, uh, especially the National Park Service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you. I guess the only thing I'm gonna say is a big here, here to Stacy Salzberg. Congratulations. No new fares or anything. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Aslan?
I'm gonna forego any comments. Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, I will end up by saying, yes, I'm excited for Nurses Week, and I want to thank the Downtown Business Alliance and the business owners for organizing to help with discounts and from retail to restaurants, et cetera, for Nurses Week. I'm very excited to, we rented out the Orpheum sign, my wife and I, so to get the extra recognition for nurses. And I also wanted to invite all of council on Saturday at 9:30 a.m. at the Lowell Observation Deck. We'll get this thrown on your calendars. But we are having a little ceremony for 10 of the nurses who have shown such leadership in this time of need. And we'll be hosting a little, little ceremony event up there, and hopefully afterward, go downtown, have these nurses get some free massages, have a nice meal, and really celebrate all together. So I wanted to extend that invitation, and of course, our awesome City Clerk will throw out the quorum notification if more than three of us are gonna be in attendance. Aside from that, also tomorrow, we'll be meeting with Senator Kelly, Councilmember Aslan, and Councilmember Sweet, myself, to go do a tour of the museum fire burn and see that. So I'm looking forward to, to that event. And then aside from that, I wanted to give the heads up that I've been working on a prevailing wage for our city contracts that would basically be like the Federal Davis Bacon Act, only for us at the local level, which we require certain wages of, for journeymen, journeyman apprentices, et cetera, and would allow us to audit books to make sure that there's no tax fraud involved in some of our contracts that our city dollars are going towards. So we can be extra good stewards. We assure that there's quality work being done, and I'm looking forward to that future discussion. So aside from that, I think that's about it. It's 5:48. How did we do all that? Cool. Well, oh, shoot, I forgot my joke of the day, because it's May 4. So I, I just had, I had to do it. So why were Episodes 4, 5, 6 made before Episodes 1, 2, and 3? Because in charge of production, Yoda was. So on that note, oh, I'm sorry, Clifton, do you have a comment? I wish I could see people's faces, because now I'm just kind of a little embarrassed, but.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did not intend to comment after your closing joke, and thank you for sharing. I wanted to also thank you for the very nice and heartfelt proclamation regarding our nurses. There were some good proclamations tonight, but being married to a nurse, and I will pass this on to her when I see her, I think that kind of acknowledgement goes a long way. And I also wanted to state what was posted in the chat column earlier, just so we all are aware, that our Vice Mayor had to miss the meeting because of an urgent matter that took her away. We will all endeavor to make sure she gets the notes from the meeting. She felt very bad that she was not going to be here this evening. But I, especially after the six meetings that have occurred over the last two weeks, I, I told her, we, she got a pass on this one, and we'll update her when she returns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, City Manager. Well, without further ado, Agenda Item 14. This meeting is adjourned. Happy Tuesday, everyone. May the force be with you.